Okay, it is 6:09, we're going to call the meeting to order. So, we do not have quorum of our elementary trustees, but we are going to go ahead and do, work on the ones that we can tonight, so it'll be a brief meeting tonight, but we will start by the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to skip ahead in our agenda over to the reports and announcements from Superintendent Hill. Turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. First of all, I'd just like to say that I am excited for this new opportunity, and have really enjoyed my first few days and couple of weeks in the district. People have been very helpful, great team, and really want to start by thanking Tracy for all of her help in my transition, and then, but also Vinnie, Amy, Pat, Trevor, Tyler, they've just been great. So, starting to connect with community leaders in Rotary, met with the Chief of Police, and President Bodnar from the university, and continuing to just make those connections with a whole bunch more to go. And then, we're starting to connect with building administration and just working on preparations to kick off the school year, and lots of exciting things happening there. Amy and Vinnie have taken the charge on that, so grateful for that leadership there. One other thing we want to, I mentioned briefly to board leadership is, but we're going to start looking at transitioning to an online platform for board governance. And there are several different programs out there. One is called Board Docs, and we're going to take it slow and easy and provide training for our trustees, but from a transparency standpoint, from accessibility standpoint, and just time and, and energy on the part of Pat and Tracy and those who have to put these agendas together. And anytime there's a change, there's just a ripple effect through all of it. It doesn't mean that we have to go wholesale right into electronic. We can certainly do a hybrid of, of electronic and/or paper, but we're going to work on that with the board, so just wanted to give you a heads up on that. After the board meeting last month, had an opportunity to sit down with Dinette Fadness, who presented on the Be Smart program, and glad to report that we've got some things underway to work on educating a little bit more about gun safety and safe storage, and working on a few other things to promote student-staff wellness relative to access to the text and tip lines for suicide prevention. So, got lots of things going on there, I was glad to be a part of that. Want to remind the board that Thursday, August 17th is a, is a budget meeting, that's when we present the, the big budget for adoption. And Pat's going to put on quite a show on the 8th to prepare us for that. Yeah, you're welcome, Pat. So, we'll talk about some preliminary numbers, but statutorily, we have to have that budget adopted by the 25th, and so that's the reason for the meeting date, giving us as much time as we can. And if we can't get the budget settled on the 17th, we can always look to carry it over to another day if we need to. So, and just looking forward to spending some time and getting to meet with trustees. I think we're going to plan on some three-on-one connections, and just welcome that. So, that's my update.
Great, thank you Superintendent Hill. My mistake for sitting in this seat and not asking for public comment to start, so I'm going to skip back to that and make sure there is not public comment on non-agenda items. I knew I missed somebody.
Hello, Casey Ballou, K-A capital C, two small e's, B-A-L-L-O-U. I'm the president of the Missoula Education Association, the certified staff union for the district, and I just wanted to say hello. I've missed a couple of meetings, and I wanted to reassure you, it's not because I took summer break. Don't worry, I'm here with you. And most of our staff members are busy in the summer, so this is my kind of annual public service announcement about that. Even though schools are closed, we've got people who are doing a whole host of things. Second jobs is among them. But we've got an evidence-based happiness class that I'm in with 45 district members that we're taking at the University of Montana. We've got a handful of people that just started the Teacher Leadership Institute in Helena with the MFPE, working on a host of issues that they'll be advocating around and working around all year. We've got national conferences that have gone on. Jenny Malloy and I actually just got back from Florida, where we partook in the Racial and Social Justice Conference, and then the National Education Association Representative Assembly. So, a lot of learning and deep diving, and a couple of rallies too, around freedom to teach, freedom to learn. We've got a whole host of things going on, so when you see teachers out there enjoying a little snippet of sunshine, make sure you smile, and know that, you know, that pleasure book is a, is a good thing, and that we're getting ourselves rejuvenated for the school year. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to skip all the way down to number eight. The topic is under Teaching and Learning. Approve nine to grades nine through 12 social studies curriculum adoption and purchase. So, I'm going to turn it back over to you Superintendent Hill.
Thank you. So, a lot of this work took place prior to my arrival at Missoula County Public Schools, and there was a group who, led by Barbara Frank, that reviewed our social studies curriculum 912, and then just worked through a process, and a process that we have in policy and statutorily to ensure that our public has access to review the materials. I know several trustees came in to review them as well, and we are ready to present to the board for action to approve the expenditure of approximately $453,105 and 51 cents for the purchase of those curriculum materials, as noted in the table.
Let's see, so we are, I'm opening up to the board for discussion and questions, yes. Trustee Witt.
I was just curious, you know, with, I saw the physical books, which is great. I'm curious, like, what part of this is like ongoing fee, how much of this is online access stuff that's going forward? Because, I mean, it used to be that you bought books, the books sat in the room for 10 years or so. Things are a lot different now, so I'm just curious. And this could be very different across the spectrum, because there are a lot of very different publications in this curriculum. Which, by the way, I'd like to point out, they were incredibly updated, because they had stuff like, in the history book, the U.S. history, it was like, here's the pandemic, here's the George Floyd murder and stuff. I was like, wow, that's in the printed version. So, it was pretty impressive to see it that far, but...
Trustee Witt, to kind of answer your question, based off the information that I have, it looks like most of these are text editions, not e-ditions of books. And a lot of them are being ordered in classroom sets, as opposed to handing out a 40-pound book to every student who takes Western Civ or U.S. history, along with the teacher editions as well. To get into the finer details, I'd have to do a little more digging to find out if we have access to e-ditions as well as the, the text print version.
Trustee Decker.
Thanks. We heard about a month ago, maybe, that this was coming, and that the materials were going to be on, you know, available for folks to review. I'm always just really curious as to whether any of the public took advantage of that opportunity. Do we know?
Yeah, I, I looked at the list, I didn't keep track. It's, I think there were probably eight people that came in, and, oop, six. Thank you, Tracy. I was looking over there, because I know she knew the answer to that question, so. Yeah, so we did have some come.
Any other trustee questions? Okay. Yeah, Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
I don't really have a question. You mentioned the history was very updated, and of course, because of my background in psychology, I scrutinized that one. Other than the fact that I didn't like the exams in it, because I thought they were too sort of picky, rather than, than larger picture, I, I was impressed with most of the books as well.
Thanks for that. It looks like, okay, so we're looking for a high school board motion on this. So, the administration recommends that trustees approve the grade nine through 12 social studies curriculum as presented, and the purchase of the grade nine through 12 social studies textbook using interlocal funds. Do we have a motion from a high school trustee? Trustee Walker Andrews, seconded by trustee Decker. And, do we, okay, so then, any final trustee comments? Okay, any public comment? Okay, and we have three minutes for public comment on any agenda item. Okay, your microphone's on now. Say and spell your name.
Okay, I am just, at this point in my life, a citizen. I have been a teacher, I have been analyzing textbooks for a number of years. Got started doing it as a part of my master's thesis.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you please start by saying and spelling your name?
I should. I'm sorry I didn't do that. My name is Ellen Hildy. It's E-L-L-E-N-H-I-L-D-E. I was hoping that I could have maybe been a part of that committee when they looked at textbooks. I had mentioned it to a high school history teacher at Helgate, but I never got any information that this was going to be done. I did listen to the comments of the one person who thought that the history textbook was incredibly updated. All history textbooks, when they are recently published, will try to include the current information in them. If you notice, this textbook is a little bit smaller than most history and other textbooks have been. Maybe an easier size for students to handle, and hopefully they will handle it. I know that my grandchildren here did read their textbooks, because their grandmother kept after them to do it. The Give Me Liberty textbook, although authored by Eric Foner, is, it has some new information in it, particularly relating to Native Americans, which is good. On some of their beliefs in freedom, and also a half-page on the boarding schools. I have only found one other textbook since 1990 that has included boarding schools in them, and then only a word. So, that was an improvement, because this is becoming a current issue again, although research has been done on Native American boarding schools for the past 50 years. And we learned about it when I was living in Bozeman in the 1980s. The textbook makes some really odd statements in it, going along with the current political correctness part of them. It's, Foner, for some reason, Eric Foner is a very noted historian. He is the lead author on this textbook, but he makes an odd comparison, comparing Africa and the Americas to Europe and the rest of the Old World, saying they were very similar in development. They were not. And that is kind of misleading to students, and particularly hurts some of the Native American and African students. The geography textbooks include some new information in terms of issues that they look at, but they have been doing that for at least the last 25 years. The geography textbooks, I don't remember them from when I went to school, because they didn't even know about plate tectonics.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay, but the geography textbooks, just to finish, are the...
Thank you. Any further public comment on this agenda item? Okay, with the motion in front of the board to, to approve this nine through 12 social studies curriculum, all trustees in favor, please indicate by raising your hands. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Okay, the next thing that we are able to tackle tonight is going to be under nine new business. Number two, approve the renewal of Montana School Board Association membership. Turning it over to you, Mr. McHugh.
Thank you. So, we are members of Montana School Boards Association. Part of our membership allows us to participate in their, two of their insurance programs, the Workers Compensation Program, MSGIA, and the Unemployment Insurance Program, MTTSUIP. And the request is for board approval to continue our membership in MTSBA, which again allows us to continue to participate in those two insurance programs. MTSBA offers other benefits as part of membership, including legal support, training, various publications. And these are all available for administrative staff and trustees, usually at no cost, the, to, to trustees or administrative staff. So, we're recommending renewal and continued membership with MTSBA.
Okay, I'm opening it up to the trustees for questions, comments. Trustee Decker.
I'm just curious as to why this item is okay for us to address, when it's an elementary and secondary item, like a lot of the others?
We have a quorum of the full board, we just don't have a quorum of the elementary.
Okay. But, but we skipped some other items, just thinking that we want to have a bigger number to be here then? Okay, I'm just making sure that I understand. Okay, thank you. So, speaking to this one, I don't have a question other than whether we could address it. I think MTSBA does a lot of great things that we need to be a part of, so.
Trustee Vogel.
So, approval of this membership is only for the Workman's Comp and Unemployment Insurance? Is there another aspect of our, I mean, don't we have membership that covers other things too, with MTSBA?
It does. I, I'm sorry, I highlighted the participation in those insurance programs, really from the standpoint that if, if you aren't a member of MTSBA, you can't participate in those insurance programs. And our renewal is due this month, so we're really not in a position to change insurance from the current programs that we have, the unemployment or the work comp insurance. So, the other benefits of MTSBA, I should have circulated these flyers, which I will, involve advocacy on behalf of schools, and you saw that during the last legislative session. You, you also receive as trustees invitations to participate in trainings, and, and we use their legal services without charge. I'll contact them to obtain opinions on different things. And they're very responsive, and they have great insight and knowledge regarding school law and school, school funding, so it's, it's beneficial to have that support. So, there are more benefits. I, sorry, I just highlighted those two pieces.
Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
Seeing this also reminded me that on, I just looked on my calendar to make sure I had the right date. I think it's on August 9th, there's going to be an MTSBA Region Six meeting, we're part of Region Six, in which they'll discuss many things, included, including early targeted intervention for the, you know, the literacy program, and the new school health insurance trust program that was passed by the legislature. And so, I wanted to encourage people to go to that. It will be held on the campus, because this, this room was full, at the Phyllis J. Washington College of Education, starting at 10:00 in the morning. And there'll also be, and this is quite nice, parking for people going to campus for this event, because that's always an issue. But, so it's, it's again, one of their smaller training things, and I think would be valuable for all of us to go to. Thanks.
Any other trustee questions or comments? Okay, then we're looking for a motion. Moved by trustee Decker, seconded by trustee, or Vice Chair Walker Andrews. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment? Okay, so, please indicate your, your vote by raising your hand for yes. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we'll move on to number three, approving the use of ESER funds for the purchase of a fence, of, purchase of a fence at Sealy-Swan High School for social distancing purposes. Mr. McHugh.
Thank you. So, during the heights of COVID, we made several purchases, and at the time, the guidance from OPI was to obtain approval for certain capital improvements through OPI, which we did. And how it's described in the agenda is evolving guidance is requiring additional, additional steps. And here, it'd be board approval for this fence that's installed at Sealy, and has been for a couple of years now. So, we're in the process of requesting reimbursement of expenditures, including this expenditure, and we, we need board approval for the purchase in order to make that, complete that request of, of OPI. So, we're asking that the board retroactively approve the purchase of that fence using ESER, ESER funds.
Okay, turning it over to the trustees for questions. Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
So, you said retroactive, because initially, we didn't have to okay the ESER funds, now we do, but we've already done it, because we didn't have to. Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood.
So, the fence is in, we're paying for it, okay. Any other trustee questions? Okay, I'll open it up for a motion. Trustee Witt, a second, seconded by trustee Sherman. Any other public, or any other trustee comments? Any public comment? Okay. So, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Okay, let's see. Okay, we're going to go skip to our personnel report, and we're just going to vote on the secondary recommendation. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lebowski.
Thank you. It's a pretty standard report. I told myself I wasn't going to say that, because Mr. Roth used to say something similar. But I'm happy to read the names and spell them out for Tyler, if you'd like me to. Typical. Excuse me. It is pretty, it is a pretty standard report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or try.
Any trustee questions? Okay. Let's see. And then, do we have a motion from a high school trustee? Okay, moved by trustee Sherman. Do we have a second trustee, seconded by trustee Vogel. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment? Okay, so everybody in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Okay. And now we're going over to number 10, the, which is an information and action item, the MTA, MTSBA ballot. I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
Thank you. So, we've been talking about this for a little bit of time, and I don't know how much people were able to go into all of the, the basic things. I'm just looking for the right page here to, to talk about it, but just, very last, okay. But anyway, this ballot is, is fairly long, but as I pointed out in the last couple of meetings, many of the changes were, I can't think of the word, semantic things that had to do with new laws that have been passed. In particular, I pointed out that the, the balance between church and state was one that had to be changed, but most of them were just cleaning things up. And so, what we need to do is take each one of these in order, starting with number three on this ballot. And so, the first one is whether we will support the dues revenue estimate. So, this is simply their report telling us how much money will be brought in for the dues for the entire state. We, as one of the larger school districts, play a flat, flat rate. Other districts play, I think it's averaged over about three years, and it changes depending upon sizes, et cetera. So, the first one is whether we want to indicate that we support or oppose the fiscal year 25 dues revenue estimate. So, we're not voting on the dues, just whether we think that the numbers that they sent us are correct. Now, do you want to vote on these one at a time like this, or wait till I talk about all of them?
What do you recommend?
I think it's easier to just do them one at a time.
Let's do that then.
Yeah, rather than trying to then go back and remember.
Yep.
So, I guess there is a motion on the floor to approve the school dues revenue estimate?
So, I'll ask for a motion, right?
Oh, you're going to ask for a motion, okay.
Yeah, so, and, and can I just ask a question before we? So, is it your, will you give us your recommendation as our representative to MTSBA?
Oh, sure, I'm happy to.
On, on whether we make a motion or not?
Okay.
Make, make the recommendation on the motion, and then we'll ask for the motion. Is that okay?
Okay, so, I need someone to recommend that we approve the fiscal year 25 dues revenue estimate.
Do you recommend that we approve that? Like, you, you...
That's what I'm asking.
And, and I recommend that we do, because it's really simply a matter of math, at this point.
That's what, yeah, we're looking to you as our representative to tell us what to do here. All right, okay. So, do we, trustee, moved by trustee Decker, do we have a second? Seconded by trustee Witt. Any trustee comments? Okay, and, and any public comment? Everyone in favor, please indicate yes by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Thank you. Back to you, Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
Okay, as the next one, if you were to read the entire, something like 30-page document, you would see a lot of yellow, but it's... you would see a lot of yellow, but it's again mainly updating language. And when I say updating language, it's just using, say, preferred terms. There's very little that's actually changed in the principles and guidelines, except, as I mentioned before, the part where they say, do we work towards a balance between church and state? As a member of this board, I would like a recommendation that we pass it, and I recommend as a member of this board that we do so.
That we.
In other words, I'm not, I'm not, the reason I say as a member of this board is whatever, I have lots of personal reactions to some of the ways that we need to talk about things now. But that's just my own personal political, rather than school board member approach. Does that make sense?
Trustee Decker.
Sorry, I think you need to turn yours off if I'm going to say something. Yeah. So am I understanding correctly that the new Principles and Guidelines document, as we are being asked to approve it, includes a number of changes, including a change to this balance of church and state, and other pieces of language? Can I ask why you would recommend that we approve that?
Because the board of the Montana School Boards Association voted as a board to approve it.
And what would be the, if it's already been approved, why may we not vote as we would wish on something that it doesn't sound like it's going to make a difference anyway?
Right. And, and, and we could certainly do so. But I'm recommending as a board that we try to have a vote, and my recommendation would be as a board that we approve them.
Can, okay. Any other trustee comments? Trustee Decker.
I'm going to make a motion that we do not approve those changes. We can continue to discuss, but I'm making that motion. That motion is made.
Can I address that?
Tracy, seconded it. Oh, you seconded it. Okay, thank you. Okay, so trustee Sherman seconds it, seconds Decker's. Okay. Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
Yes. I think probably I shouldn't have brought it up, but the one stumbling block for me was indeed the notion that we no longer emphasize separation of church and state, but rather the balance. However, if you look at the Supreme Court decisions in the last year or two, that is what the Supreme Court has decided. And therefore, that's the current state of this kind of debate.
Trustee Decker.
It's, it's my recollection that as trustees, we took an oath to uphold the Montana Constitution and the Constitution of the United States. That's what our oath calls us to. And it is my belief that separation of church and state is actually something that, well, now, I'm not a lawyer. I don't know that there is a mandate to adopt this language based on Supreme Court decisions that are recent. That doesn't, I don't, I don't understand that to be my responsibility. But we can have this conversation about the motion, for sure.
Trustee Witt.
Can you remind me, because I think we talked about this in a prior meeting, but how that change came about and in the wording?
I wish I had brought the, I have it on my phone if I look for it, but simply because in the last, I'm trying to think, it was like the Fitzgerald language in prior years, but because of decisions made more recently about whether you're required to, say, serve someone that your religious beliefs don't agree with, that because the court's decided in favor of that happening, then the emphasis has changed between trying to say that we both have to weigh people's free, freedom of religion and free speech rights to separation of church and state, rather than saying one is more important than the other. Does that make sense? Again, I'm not a lawyer either. But, so it's, the court cases have emphasized that both of those are captured in the Constitution and the Bill of Rights, and that perhaps in prior years, we had emphasized more complete separation, but that now we're doing a little more of the weight of individual rights and religion and, and trying to find someplace in the middle. I had not considered what the Montana Constitution says, but.
Trustee Decker.
Again, I am not an expert, but I do know that many of the kinds of cases that would seem to follow the line of reasoning that you're discussing, this idea that are being litigated and are being appealed and are being, like, there, there, much of this is not settled, and certainly that's true in Montana. And so, you know, we have not had any changes to the Montana Constitution based on our current legislative session, and it is my understanding that the oath of office that I took to uphold the Montana Constitution, my responsibilities to that haven't changed. Now, the Montana School Board Association, it sounds like, has already voted upon this thing. But, you know, for, for me, I, you know, I don't, I made the motion that I made.
So I want to say the Montana, I'm sorry, I didn't get it recognized. The Montana School Boards Association voted to go ahead and change the language and then bring it to people to approve or not. Okay? So it's not that they've changed it completely on their own. They're waiting for all of the boards to approve those changes that they went through.
And if I could just ask a question, too. So this, the part that we're talking about is one small part of the changes they've made, correct? Right. I just wanted to be clear about that. This is not like a motion on that language.
Right. Most of it is.
It includes that language.
Yeah, it includes that in one section. But most of the changes are, as I said before, almost, grammatical isn't the word either, but they're updating terminology, they're changing the bulging format of what's there already, very small changes. And I know that Jennifer was going to look at those, and so you may have a comment about that as well.
Yeah, trustee Vogel. Yes, I appreciate trustee Walker Andrews forwarded me the 29-page document. I hadn't seen it until she had sent it to me. I couldn't find it. And, I mean, it was maybe a misstep on my part that I didn't, I wasn't reading along, you know, weeks prior, as we were discussing this. But, yeah, separation of church and state is not in the Constitution. So if, so I guess my question is, if we table this for further discussion, just this one part of all the things that we're voting on, are we going to have an opportunity to come back? And are we going to have to, you know, kind of adjust the language to fit our own understanding? What do we do?
The motion is to reject it right now. We don't have a motion to table it. So I would say the first, we have to vote on the motion to, to reject this. Is that, am I correct on that? Yeah, Superintendent Hill.
Yeah, just to maybe add a little bit of clarity to the discussion, Montana School Boards Association board voted to put this language in front of all of their members, which Missoula County Public Schools is a member, and they're asking every board to vote on whether or not to approve the changes that they're recommending. So if we vote, if the board votes no, it still is probably going to pass by a majority vote of the members for the change. So it would be, you know, at this point, probably out of principle, but if every school board was having the same discussion and not just adopting wholesale MTSBA's recommendations, then it might not. So table it, vote on it. I think the three recommendations are either approve, oppose, or abstain. Does that help? So we're going to, you're going to vote tonight, and this is going to be forwarded to them, and then they will tally up all the votes to find out whether or not any of these items will pass.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Yeah, Vice Chair.
I also just looked up to see what the Constitution in Montana says, and it simply says, and I think it's the same wording as the U.S. Constitution, "The state shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." And so, again, separation of church and state, even though I throw it out there, again, I'm not a lawyer, and a lot of us just say it that way, but these are the actual words. And the Supreme Court is interpreting those to mean more of a balance between those two.
Any other trustee comments? Trustee Decker.
In the interest of being completely transparent, the concern of folks who, including myself, who would reject something like this, is that the exercise of religion is in many places being used to deprive others of their equitable rights in education environments. And the idea of balance in our public schools where religion is concerned is definitely a very important one to pay attention to, and making sure that folks have the ability to express their religious, deeply held convictions and beliefs. But there should be no balance coming from the administration of any public school institution where it comes to religion in that way. And there should be no pressure coming from any person who holds power within an education institution in that way. And I'm very concerned that as we open the door to saying there is a balance, that opens the door to alter the very careful approach to the exercise of religion that has allowed exercise without pressure and without institutional sort of preference and validation of those expressions. So I think this is, this, it is one little piece of language, but these are the kinds of pieces of language change that folks use to support actions that are, at times, oppressive to minority populations in education institutions. And so we have to proceed with a lot of caution when something like this comes in front of us.
Any other board comments? So we, at this point, we have a motion to reject the changes to the MTPSBA Principles and Guidelines. Do we have any public comment? Okay, so at this point, we'll take a vote to, to, the motion is to reject the changes to the MTSBA Principles and Guidelines. Everybody in favor of that motion, raise your hand. Okay, so, except for Vice Chair Walker Andrews, that was unanimous to the other trustees present. Okay. And back to you, Walker Andrews.
Next one has to do with the, quote, foundational elements of the organizational DNA. And this is really, again, small changes in the way that things are worded, but I would say that the organizational principles that are there have, are continuing, and that it's mainly changing, you know, these days, we don't use passive verbs, we use active verbs. It's that kind of change. Nothing else is really different. And so I would recommend that we approve those.
Let's see. Any trustee comments? And I'll ask for a motion, according to trustee, or Vice Chair Walker Andrews' motion, or, sorry, recommendation to approve this piece. By trustee Witt, and seconded by trustee Decker. Any other trustee comments? Any public comment? Okay, seeing none, please raise your hand to indicate a vote for yes. And, okay, that is, okay, so yes, sorry, can we, can I get hands again?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, that is yes, except for trustee Sherman. Okay, so abstain by trustee Sherman.
Okay, the next one is asking us to support or oppose the multi-year vision-based advocacy process resolution. And the only change here is that in the past, the Montana School Boards Association has set out sort of a plan for advocacy for schools to the next legislative session. But in the newer one, they decided that it's probably better not to think only two years in advance, but to really be preparing for the next two vision-based advocacy kinds of questions. So one of the things that they've talked about is many of the, many bills that came forward this time that might not have been approved are very likely to come up again. And so to be prepared, both for the next session and the one after that, to address these kinds of issues, rather than being shortsighted. And I would recommend we approve it.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Walker Andrews. Any trustee comments, questions? Do we have a motion to approve? Moved by trustee Decker, seconded by trustee Witt. And then do we have any public comments? Any final trustee comments? Okay, and so all in favor of this one, please raise your hand to vote yes. Okay, and that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Back to you, trustee, or Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
Okay, this last large one has to do with what's called the gap analysis. And this dates from when courts in the state of Montana decided that there was not enough funding to deliver the education that we sort of promised the citizens and the children of Montana. And therefore, this is simply to say that we would continue to examine and try to determine where there are shortcomings in terms of what the state is giving to the schools, how money is handled, how boards approach it. It's, again, just continuing to do the kind of work they already do. And I say that we should approve it.
Any trustee questions? So, oh, yeah, trustee Vogel.
So there's a whole list of House bills that are on here, and I don't, I'm not, I'm not aware, but maybe, I don't think all of them have been approved by the legislature. Some of them were.
Right, so there's, so, right, there was, for example, one of the bills that was brought up was asking that school board elections be changed to every other year, even numbered years, I believe, and at the same time as regular elections. That bill did not pass, okay? And so basically, what the, if you even go back to this multi-year vision-based advocacy is to say, it did not pass, but there seems to be enough people in the legislature that were interested in that, and they're assuming that it will come up again. Okay? And so the question is whether to be, how to be prepared for, and this also extends into the gap analysis, where is it that things have been identified as problems? And even if nothing was passed this time, how can we continue to either work for or advocate against if we don't? or advocate against if we don't think that's a good idea? That makes sense?
Trustee Vogel.
So, so all that we're voting on is that we acknowledge this whole list of things that could eventually be kicked back to the legislature to continue to work on. We're just kind of saying, yes, please work on them still, because we don't always approve of them.
Well, we would, we would be asked, so, for example, we were asked today, and I'm not sure everybody got this email, but we were asked today to discuss as a board any resolutions or changes that we would like to see in school governance and propose by September 21st of whatever. So, if we decided, for example, that we think that one way to ensure that all children get the kind of education that we think they need, if we were to propose that there should be, say, magnet, I'm going to make this up completely, magnet schools for language learning, you know, Spanish immersion, that, for example, we discussed a number of years ago, then we could push for that, okay? And so, so what we're trying to do is just be aware of the kinds of things that'll be coming down the line and how we feel as a board. And then, we're encouraging the Montana School Boards Association to consult with the people that are on all of our boards in order to take our wishes forward. It's all very kind of, you know, organizational rather than specifics.
Trustee Vogel.
Um, could, is there any way that we could offer suggestions? Because I have some thoughts on House bill 393.
Yes, we, we should. And in fact, that's what this invitation was, to ask boards to do that very thing.
Could we think about doing that at some point? Is there a deadline for those suggestions?
He said September 15th. I said 21st, September 15th. So, we could sit down today and, or our next meeting, and, and, and decide that we would like to see some changes in, as you mentioned, some of the bills for children with special needs, and ask them to take that forward.
Okay, great, and I think trustee Vogel, this is why we elected vice chair Walker Andrews to be our representative at MTSBA, so you get with her, and we'll talk, and talk about these things that you want to see changes on. That's excellent, great. Any other trustee comments? Where are we? Do we need a motion on this one?
And, and I wanted to say, I think this is good because I, I really would like us to be active and to take those invitations.
Absolutely.
Because otherwise, I don't see why I'm on that board.
Yeah.
So, okay. So, the last two are really.
Wait, sorry, we didn't vote on this, and we need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have a motion, so.
We, we did, we need a motion still, thank you, Tracy. Do we have a motion on that one? Trustee Witt, moved by trustee Witt, do we have a second? Seconded by trustee Decker, thank you. There's not a lot of us, so we got to keep, keep it moving, so. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment on this one? Okay, so, all in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And back to you, vice chair Walker Andrews.
Okay, the last two are to elect the vice president and the president, or president-elect and vice president-elect to the Montana School Boards Association. And so, the first one is for Sue Corrigan, who is currently a director on the MTSBA, but also on the Callisbell School Board to be the president-elect. And I think that probably, if we know, I don't know anything more about her, Micah Hill could tell us something. And I recommend that we approve it.
Any trustee questions? Trustee Vogel.
Can you address that, Mr. Hill?
Absolutely. Trustee Corrigan in Callisbell, exemplary school board member, works for the benefit of students and staff, and I would support her 100%.
Thank you, any other trustee comments? Yes, trustee Vogel.
Um, vice chair Walker Andrews, do you also know her? And do you support her?
Yes, I do, and I think she's terrific. And our only bone of contention is that she accused us of stealing Micah Hill.
Any other trustee questions, comments? Do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Witt. Second. Seconded by trustee Vogel, thank you. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment? Okay, so, all in favor of the nomination of Sue Corrigan as MTSBA president-elect? That is unanimous as to all trustees present. And back to you, vice chair Walker Andrews.
Okay, the last is to support or oppose the nomination of Crystal Zentner, who is a trustee from Bridger as the vice president. And I think, I'm probably the only person who knows her, but she's very enthusiastic, hardworking, all the things you'd want to see. So, I recommend that we approve her.
Trustee Decker.
She appears to be the director of the Bridger Public Library, which is an awesome role and relationship for someone who's on the school board. That's pretty cool.
Thanks for that. Any other trustee comments? And do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Decker, seconded by trustee Sherman. Do we have any public comment? Any additional trustee comments? And then we'll take a vote, indicate by raising your hand to elect, or to nominate Crystal Zentner. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present.
Can I say a quick word?
Yes, please, vice chair Walker Andrews.
I just want to thank everybody because it really was a 29-page document. And I'm not so sure I did so well on always describing everything. But I think in the past, the director from this board on the MTSBA simply did this without bringing it to the whole board. And I just didn't feel comfortable doing that, so, thank you.
I'll just say, we appreciate your representation so much, vice chair Walker Andrews. So, thanks for educating us all and bringing it to us. So, with that, it is 7:06, and we're adjourned.